Well, it is 7 o'clock and we welcome everyone to City Council tonight, Tuesday, August 22, 2012. Are we all set? To my right, to my left, Melissa. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let's go ahead and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and we have Counselor Garvin that will lead us in that.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Adam. This is the time of the meeting where we have an invitation to citizens for public comment. And so if there's anyone that would like to speak on any topic other than a topic that's already on the agenda this evening, a matter in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. So I'll call anyone would like to address the council this evening? Go ahead, Doug. If you'd sign in and state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name's Doug Johnson. I live at 1834 Northwest 8th Street in McMinnville. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, I want to first thank you for the opportunity you give citizens in this short period of time to address you. I just think that's marvelous and appreciate that. So I wanted to share with you some reflections briefly on what's called IP-22, the Initiative Proposal, that proposes to rescind the so-called Oregon Sanctuary Law. Been a lot of discussion recently about that and including the meeting that was here this last week with Representatives Noble and Nierman, which I was grateful to be a part Representative Nierman would have us believe that IP-22 will make our community safer. I would like to suggest to you, and this is where it's relevant to you because I know that it's not something that's under your jurisdiction, but I do believe it will impact our community. And I believe it will impact our community in quite the opposite way that Representative Nierman would suggest. If you recall back to when Sally Goddard and Miriam Corona addressed you introducing Minitos Bridging Community, they spoke to you about how many Latino families are of mixed status. Some are citizens, some are legal residents, some might be DACA, and some don't have any documentation to be here. It's already a challenge, a significant challenge, to get the Latino community to make contact with our law enforcement agencies out of fear of what would happen. And that's with this sort of sanctuary status in place where we can advocate or speak to members of the community and try to convince them that truly if the police come to your home for some event, that they're not interested in your status, they just want to know what happened so that they can help solve the problem. But even with that in place, it's my understanding is that it's quite a difficult challenge to get the Latino community to communicate openly, readily with law enforcement agencies. I would suggest to you that if IP-22 were to go on the ballot and pass, that what is difficult today will become a whole nother magnitude of difficulty in terms of communication between the Latino community and law enforcement agencies. Because at that point, even if I am a citizen, if I know my cousin in the house is not, I'm not going to call you. This would be my suggestion, my reflections on what I think would be the actual impact of IP-22 on the safety of our community is there would be less communication. So like I said, I know that it's not under your jurisdiction, but I wanted to bring those thoughts to you as you have conversations whether as private citizens or in various professional capacities that you consider really challenging the assumption that, you know, okay, we can raise certain extreme cases where someone was murdered. And I don't want to minimize the seriousness of those, but to raise those isolated cases and make those generalities about how it'll make our communities safer, I think is, well, I don't know the adjective, I don't think it's true. So I just wanted to share those thoughts with you as you represent us, whether it's here in town or as you travel about. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate that. A few of us happened to be able to attend that town hall and so we were privy to some of the discussions that were happening. So thank you for bringing that before us this evening. Any other comments that would like to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move forward. This evening, we have a public hearing that was published on August 15, 2017, a public hearing on the proposed supplemental budget for the city of McMinnville for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. And that will be held here this evening at 7 o'clock. And the purpose of the hearing is to discuss the supplemental budget with interested persons. A copy of that supplemental budget document was obtainable through the Finance Department between the hours of 8 and 5. And so that is, that has been notified, we've notified that. And so at this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask anyone that would like to make public comment on the supplemental budget that is dealing with changes to the budget in the Airport Maintenance Fund. And hearing none, we will have a resolution a little later going a little more in detail then. Hearing no comments for the public hearing, I'll go ahead and close that. Okay. This evening, our consent agenda considers the minutes of the May 23, 2017 dinner and regular meeting. Would any counselor request to have any item taken off of the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
(inaudible).
And a second. So it has been moved by Counselor Stassenz and seconded by Counselor Rudin. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This consent agenda passes unanimously. That takes us to resolutions this evening. Resolutions 2017-57, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the fiscal year 2017-18 and making supplemental appropriations. And this is related to the Airport Maintenance Fund. And so Marcia, I'll call on you to give us a description and start us out.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. As we stated before, the supplemental budget is required for the fiscal year 2017-18 in the Airport Maintenance Fund because work that was expected to be completed in fiscal year 1617 is carried over to 1718. Local budget law does allow the government to prepare a supplemental budget when an occurrence or condition that was not known at the time the budget was prepared requires a change in financial planning. And this supplemental budget must be passed by resolution. And if the resolution increases the fund's expenditures by more than 10%, the public hearing is required. As you noted earlier, a notice of the public hearing was published in the News Register on August 15 as was required. This resolution and supplemental budget increase the capital outlay in the Airport Maintenance Fund by 1.6 million, which does exceed the 10% threshold. So I guess I would ask Mike if he has any other comments to make.
Not at this time. We'll certainly entertain any questions you might have about the project. Engineering Manager Rich Spofford is here this evening and this is one of his projects. He can share information regarding the work if you're interested. Again, our fiscal year ends June 30, which is right in the middle of construction season. And quite often, as we're preparing the final budget documents for adoption, we're able to accurately predict the amount of work that's going to be completed prior to June 30. In this particular case, the contractor did not complete a significant amount of work prior to June 30. And that's why we're carrying the expenditures and the revenues forward to this fiscal year.
Rich, do you plan on staying a little while tonight? If you will, why don't we, when we have reports by department head, we talked at the dinner meeting and would really like to have an update of where we're at. We have an opportunity to be approached by many citizens that are just interested and the council felt it might be great to have that update. So we'll do that. It's a short agenda tonight, so I promise you, you'll still be able to get home in a halfway decent hour. Okay. Thank you, Marcia and Mike, for those updates. I'll turn it to the council. Any discussions among yourself or questions? Okay. I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-57.
(inaudible).
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Rudin and seconded by Council President Menke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously. Okay. Resolution 2017-58, a resolution approving the acquisition of property from the McMinnville School District Number 40 for the Hill Street Road Improvement Transportation Bond. We'll call on Community Development Director Mike Bissett to present our findings there. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet from Project Manager Larry Sherwood, as well as the proposed resolution and purchase documents that are there for your review. This is, I believe, the third resolution related to property purchases for the Hill Road Project. This particular parcel is school district property at Hill and Wallace. The school board and school district has approved the offer and we're advancing it to you for your approval.
Any discussions or questions among the council? Hearing none, I will call for a motion to approve Resolution 2017-58.
(inaudible).
That has been moved by Counselor Rudin and seconded by Counselor Garvin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously. Resolution 2017-59, a resolution regarding the award of a contract for the construction of the Fort and Ford Sanitation Sewer Rehabilitation Project, Project Number 2016-14. Mike, if you could present what's in front of us at this point?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'll refer you to the staff report that's in your packet from Project Manager Roy Markey, as well as the draft resolution and project vicinity map for your information. This is a small project in the vicinity of Fort and Ford that addresses a combined storm and sanitary sewer system, one of the few remaining spots in our system that still has storm tied to sanitary. This work will allow us to separate the systems and will accommodate development that's happening in that location. This is a continuing, one of the continuing projects in our master plan to remove inflow and infiltration out of the sanitary sewer system. Five bids were received for the work and the low bid from Emory &amp; Sons Construction in the amount of $385,428 was deemed to be the lowest responsible and responsive bid. So unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution as presented.
Mike, Emory &amp; Sons is involved in how many other projects with us right at this point?
So they're currently the contractor for the Alpine Avenue Project as well as the second between Adams and Cowell's Project. They previously completed the Cook School Inflow and Infiltration Rehabilitation Project that occurred in the summer of 2016. So they've done a number of projects in the area for us.
Yeah, we're seeing their trucks all over town. Okay. Any discussion from council? Adam?
With them being involved in so many projects, do they still have the manpower to do this in a timely fashion?
They do. In fact, they're, they still have bonding capacity and they're committed to complete the work within our timeframe. And so we're confident that the work will be completed as proposed.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Any other questions?
Mike, I just noticed the estimate for the work is 345,000 opposed to 385, the worked in. What's the process to go through when you have that difference of $40,000?
So we'll do a detailed review of what our project manager's estimate was versus the actual bids. In fact, one of the bidders, one of the higher bidders on the project sort of teased our project manager on bid date and noted to him that prices have risen this summer and it's time for our staff to catch up with the new pricing. And so it's a moving target at times and this particular project was designed in-house, an estimated in-house. Oftentimes, we'll have a consultant that's doing work for us that has exposure to a number of project bids that are taking place in the area. In this particular case, it's a smaller project. There was interest in the work, but we're seeing prices rising and I think probably you might be able to reflect on seeing that in your industry as well.
Yes, for sure.
That part of it that's risen so dramatically, is that labor materials or both?
A combination of all, yeah.
Is one stand out above the other?
I don't recall that anyone was surprised that there was one thing that was, you know, grossly underestimated. I think it was a combination of all the bid items being higher priced at this point. We do, we have heard on some of our other projects that supplies such as crushed rock are difficult to find and you're seeing those prices rise accordingly just because the material is difficult to obtain.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2017-59.
(inaudible).
A second?
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Garvin and seconded by Council President Menke. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously. That takes us to the point tonight where we'll go into advice and information reports from counselors on committee and board assignments. So I think Adam will start your way and then move across.
Nothing new with Wycom and that's about it?
Okay. Council President?
Halfway, there is going to be on September 23, an opportunity to walk the bypass. And these runs from 10 to 2 o'clock. It's a four mile stretch. There will be officials out there walking with you. It's an informal type of gathering. I think there are planned to have more formal evening type thing at least in Newburgh. But kind of put that on your calendar if you're interested in going and seeing some nice bridges and other things. The project is not complete. It won't be complete till December or January, but this is an opportunity to do a soft open and let people see what has been built all this time. Oh, and then on the visit McMinnville, they're starting, we have a company that is going to do our feasibility studies for looking for entertainment facilities and what type of entity, what this community should be looking at for that sort of thing. So we're kind of looking into the future. It's pretty exciting. And that will be near the end of the year, so more to be hearing about that.
Yeah, if I remember again, with an eye maybe focused a little on what it might take to have a convention center or a meeting facility and for the council and staff, you know, the need to make sure any partners out there that are involved in that kind of business, we want to make sure that the consultant knows our partners out there so that we can look and involve them.
They're looking at what we already have to, potential places for gathering.
Wendy?
We haven't met for the Urban Manual Advisory Committee since last meeting, so I have nothing to say.
Okay. Alan?
There's a couple of meetings tomorrow. I guess I'll let you talk about the Affordable Housing Task Force. There's a Affordable Housing Task Force meeting at 10 o'clock at the CDC and then also a 3 o'clock meeting for the Historic Landmarks Committee at 3 o'clock. So two meetings tomorrow.
Thank you, Alan. Remi?
I think that's pretty much all I would have said, other than if you choose to attend Affordable Housing Task Force tomorrow, there's a lot of information happening in that meeting in terms of what happened with the Planning Commission last week in terms of reviewing cottage codes and ADUs and as well as updates from what's happening on the Homeless Subcommittee. So there'll be a lot of information available in that meeting as well as the other agenda items.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to go to one of my favorite committees, the Landscape Committee. I'll learn a lot there. But again, that committee is alive and doing well and they're reviewing any enhancements to buildings and additions. Again, I just appreciate the longevity of that committee and those that are doing what we need to have happening there. Had an opportunity with Council President Menke to take a tour through the Union Gospel Mission last week and was truly impressed with the forward motion that group is taking and the number of beds that are available compared to two years ago when we visited. At the Affordable Housing Homeless Committee meeting, we talked a little bit about some zoning rules and I know that we're looking in, Heather's looking into that, that'll allow them to have more of the drop-in participation there. But again, was just very amazed at a direction and a capacity issue that's going to serve this community well. Council President and myself also had an opportunity to visit the Youth Outreach Center in Newburgh with Commissioner Sterrett and was just amazed at a program that is working so well in Newburgh with outreach for the youth. And so we're just kind of moving down a path of seeing what it might take to create an outreach center here in McMinnville for our youth. Again, so many success stories, so much expertise that was just taken back and felt really good about the work that's being accomplished there. Kelly, any additional thoughts?
Just to tie into it, I know that I was supposed to go, but didn't yesterday, there was a meeting, or no, today there was a meeting over at Blanchard Farms and Blanchard Farms or whatever it is, on the tiny home building. And I think Mary may come to the Affordable Housing Committee meeting tomorrow to talk a little bit about that trip. She went over with Jeff. I was supposed to go, totally spaced it.
Okay. And then lastly, I just wanted to update the council on our Behavioral and Safety Task Force. We're probably two members away from convening that committee. And as soon as we have a go-ahead with those committee members, we will share that information in a written form with council and we'll bring that back and make sure that you're feeling comfortable with that. We'll share that with the News Register and we'll start moving forward with that process. But those that we've talked to have been very excited to serve on that task force, so more to come. With that being said, let's go around and department heads. Matt?
Just a couple of things real quickly. Dragged the guts this weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Yay. We'll staff up for that. Bryce Winters graduated from the Police Academy August 11th. He's in training now. And then lastly, we're in the midst of a promotional process for the vacant captain position, so lots of moving parts right now internally. So that's what we've got going.
Thank you, Matt. Marcia?
I wanted to announce that the city did again receive the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for fiscal year 1516. This is the 28th consecutive year that we've achieved that award. And we'll soon be, very soon be gearing up for the audit for fiscal year 201617.
Share how pleased we are with the staff and, I mean, you guys work so well together and we're pleased, excited. But again, you've got, you've got a long history of doing the right stuff, so thank your staff. Thank you, Marcia.
I certainly will. Thank you.
Scott, anything from you?
Nothing too exciting going on. We have a lot of, we do a lot of security work lately, it's one of those button items that's been going on. We're designing some employee education program. They're telling people what to do with all those terrible emails that you get.
Right.
People do a pretty darn good job around the city.
Good.
Start that word now, but the more we can do, the better.
Well, again, tell your staff how much we appreciate them too. You guys are always behind the scenes and that's a good thing because you're busy doing the right kinds of stuff, but if you'd share with them how much we appreciate. Good. Mike, anything from you and then we'll have Rich update us because again, I think there's a desire on the part of the council just to be updated on the runway improvements. Rich, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you then.
The runway project moves forward. We pulverize the runway. We're working on stripping shoulders and getting that graded. Currently this week, we're waiting for results on a geotechnical test. And depending on that test, we hope to start cement treating the runway base Monday. And that'll be about an 18-hour-a-day operation, starting at 3:00 in the morning, going through 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, for anywhere from 6 to 8 days. And then right behind that, the contractor will start working on some storm work and continuing on to get to the paving part of it and wrapping the project up. We are a month behind schedule. Had a rough start with the wet winter and spring and I'm out there every day, our engineering company's out there every day trying to make sure that we can get momentum going and maybe shave days off because obviously every day that the runway doesn't open on time, it's a cost to the community and to the users of the airport. So we're trying to wield a big stick and keep that going and shave some days off of that schedule.
Any questions for Rich from the council? Adam?
Is there any incentive to get it done on time?
Or penalties?
Yeah, there's no incentives. Depending on how you look at it, there is penalties. After the 28th of September, it's $500 a day that will be deducting from their contract payment.
Is there any incentives if they get done or?
No, there isn't. FAA doesn't pay for that type of stuff.
I recognized over the weekend just a number of private planes that were set up in the field tied down. Give us a sense of for Monday's events. I counted about 15 to 20 planes that seem to be additional to what would be housed here in McMinnville. Is that approximate or?
So I don't have a report from Hollandingo of yesterday's event. They sort of immediately retired to the beach for a couple of days to recover, but they've been working hard for the last month or so to prepare the airport in advance of the eclipse. And as of Friday afternoon, they had sort of call-in queries of over 100 people wanting And as of Friday afternoon, they had sort of call-in queries of over 100 people wanting to fly in, and 12 jets that were going to be on the apron. So I expect that they were quite busy yesterday. We prepared the, the airport to accept up to 500 planes, knowing that that was probably a gross overestimation, but they figured they'd prepare for the worst, and then it would be easier to handle the traffic that they receive. So when they get back in a day or so, I'll see if I can get a report and share that with council, but.
Well, I think that's going to be helpful to recoup some of those revenues that they've been down a bit, so, but it looked very organized. I think it was Sunday evening that I went by, and I just saw lots of activity. I stayed away on Monday, so I didn't have that opportunity. So thank you, Rich. Thank you, Mike. Melissa? Natalie? It's good to have you up here with us. Jeff?
Mayor, members of the council, a couple of things. Doris and I were delighted to attend along with the mayor and Donna, and Council President Menke and Glenn, the city-county dinner last week hosted by the Gamble Hill County Board of Commissioners at the Shaillam Cultural Center in Newburgh. It was great to get a chance to reconnect with some of my professional colleagues and meet a lot of the folks that I hadn't met in the room before. Commissioner Primasek was our emcee, and he was ably assisted by the, I'm going to say three- or four-year-old daughter of the amity council president, and she was rocking the Cindy Lou Who look and completely upstaged him. I reminded the commissioner that performing with children and animals was always to the detriment of the performer. But had a really nice time, and, and, and the table ultimately did not get skunked in the drawings, which was sort of nice.
That's right.
Also, just to let the council know that I will be out of town tomorrow, Thursday and Friday on Professional Association Business, returning to the office on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We are now going to move into an executive session under ORS 192662D to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry out labor negotiations. So we are going to be going in the conference room. We anticipate that we will be back here, so we're not going to conclude the council meeting, because we will hopefully have a resolution coming out of that. So I think this will not take too long, but we will go into the council chambers. We're back into our general session, and before us is resolution number 201716, or 60, a resolution ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the city of McMinnville and the McMinnville Police Association, the MPA, for wages only for the period starting July 1st, 2017. Any discussion from the council?
I have some thoughts in that, I think this is fantastic in that there's a response to the clear need and demand for additional officers. I fully support that and support our, our officers in our police department, and I'm behind this. I support this and continuing in this way. My only thoughts or discussion are really directed towards the council and, and not towards the McMinnville Police Association, which is that I think it's a positive step that we move forward and move towards getting these additional officers on board. But when it comes to strategic planning this year, I feel as though cobbling together finances from marijuana tax money, Northwest Natural Franchise fee money, ecology increases, and transient lodging tax dollars really isn't sufficient. And that, and if we're going to continue to add police officers, which this is not the end of adding police officers, we need to continue to add police officers, that we need to thoroughly examine areas in which we can create other revenue streams that become permanent funding sources for our police department. And I also believe, from a lot of conversations with citizens from every ward and who are working in every field, that we will not be met with any pushback on doing so. There is a clear demand and desire for an increased police force from this council, from the citizens at large, from the, from the police department themselves. And I think it is absolutely crucial that, while we may supplement some funds in, in the immediate to fulfill this, that we figure out a very clear revenue stream that supports our police department in the short and the long term.
Thank you, Remy. Well, well put, and I think that really is the thought of the council, too. And that's why that strategic planning becomes so necessary, and with a focus on financing. I think we've heard it all the way around the table, and so I look forward to moving to that next level of the strategic planning that we need to be involved in so critically. So well put. Any other discussions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve resolution number 201760.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Garvin and seconded by Council President Menke. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously. And that concludes our council meeting for this evening. Thank you for your participation.